Welcome to Democratic Voices. I'm Carrie Stare.
And I'm your co-host, Sue Tiernan.
This season on Democratic Voices, we're going to be exploring some of the county and municipal offices up for election in November 2021 and what they do. Today, we're going to discuss the school board and what their role is. This year, in all 500 school districts in Pennsylvania and in all 12 school districts in Chester County, four seats are up for election. In another two years, five seats will be up for election in all of the school districts. My co-host for our episode today is Sue Tiernan. Sue is a lifetime resident of Westchester and in her 10th year of serving on the Westchester School Board.
Thank you. A little bit about my background. I got interested in running for school board. I had left education after 30, 35 years of doing just about every job you could do. And after three or so years, I decided that my passion was still teaching and students and learning. And I would run for school board. Seemed like an easy enough thing to do. Now, I've got to tell you, if you're thinking of running for school board, you may not get elected the first time. I certainly didn't. It was a big surprise, but I was running with a group of Democrats and none of us got elected. No Democrat had ever gotten elected to the Westchester School Board. So in a couple of years, I said, I'll do it again. And this time I ran with four other people and we ran on a write-in ticket. An almost impossible thing to do.
Yes.
I got elected with a very, very, very close margin with four people behind me. I got elected to the Tea Party Republican School Board, which was out of control political. Political Republican Committee people came to the school board meeting and yelled at school board members if they did not toe the party line when they discussed school district business. It was not a good situation for our children. So I got on the board and for two years it was eight Tea Party Republicans and Sue. And I mean to tell you that when I say you must leave politics at home, they hadn't heard that message at all. They would get together before the board meeting and come up with a script of how they were going to vote and what they were going to say. Of course, I had no idea what that was because nobody was talking to me. And finally, when Joyce and three other people ran, some Republicans and Democrats as a group ran together to say, we have to do what's right for our kids. We have to fix this school board situation. And they got on the board. Now there were five of us. They got on the board because they ran a great campaign, supported by both Democrats and an awful lot of Republicans. And that's how they got on the school board and that's how things started to turn around to what I feel is a successful, strong board today, made up of Republicans and Democrats who are not, who do not come onto the board to be a party rep. They come onto the board to be a kid rep. So.
And that's the whole point of school board. It's apolitical. It's, it's, it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, you're a Republican. Your job is to be there for the students.
Exactly. And that's why it's a little confusing when you're running because you're running as a Democrat. You have to run as one or the other. You can't just say, I'm Carrie and I'd make a good school board member because I have this background and these beliefs. In a lot of states, that is the way it is. But in Pennsylvania, it's a very political run-up. You have to sort of switch that off and say, I made it. Now let me do some good work here for the people in this community. So that's, when I talk about the school board, I want it to be an apolitical job. But the reality is that to get there, you're going to take a political path.
That's some very good knowledge to have. And joining us today to help us not only learn more about the school board and to discuss her reelection for her third term is Joyce Chester. Hi Joyce, welcome to Democratic Voices.
Hi Carrie, how are you today?
I'm doing pretty good. How are you?
Good. I'm doing good.
All right. Sue, can you introduce Joyce for everybody?
I will. Joyce Chester, CEO and Director of the Chester County OIC and a woman who does so much more in Chester County. Joyce, could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, there's much to tell. And then I work at Chester County OIC. This is my 20th year. I cannot believe it. Working in nonprofit. Of course, previous to nonprofit, I was self-employed for 10 years with my own advertising business. And then prior to that, I worked in corporate for a number of years. I don't want to give my age away. But so, and, and every, every aspect of my work, I have totally, totally enjoyed. So I have a family here. I've lived in Chester County for 30 years now and raised my two boys here for the most part. My younger son, he has, he graduated Henderson. My older son is, is a, is a physical therapist. And both of them doing very well. My younger son recently graduated Westchester University and is working in Dallas, Texas. Not so happy about that. He's so far away, but he's, he's doing what he needs to do. So I'm very happy about that. My grandson graduates this year and my grandson has been accepted into Widener and Westchester and Arcadia and awarded a full scholarship in Widener. So we're excited about that. We're excited about the, the district, obviously. I've, I've put children through it, so I want to make sure it works well. That's a little bit about me.
Okay. Thank you. Would you tell us a little bit, just a little bit about how you decided to join the school board, run for school board? And what your first campaign was like? Just a little bit.
Well, why did I, there was a bird chirping in my ear saying, I think you'd be good for the school board. As my younger son was graduating Henderson. And I said, wait, what? However, I, there was a lot that I didn't know about the school board, so I quickly needed to learn as much as I could, even though I had children going through that school, through the, through the Westchester area school district. So I thought, well, you know what? It's never too late to learn. And I have raised two very productive children, so let me share that expertise with others. So I think, Sue, I have you to thank for actually being on the school board. I'm so grateful though, every day, because in this past seven, going on eight years now, I have learned so much about how the school operates, what it does for children, the importance of having that voice that speaks for children. So I, these eight years have been amazing and wouldn't exchange them for anything. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, yes. Now, down to business. Would you please help the viewers or listeners of this program learn a little bit about what the school board is and how they function, actually in all 500 districts in the state?
Wow. Well, we, we function as a unit. I learned that very quickly. It's not my one, while my one voice is important for the discussion, when we speak, we speak as a group. So it's very important that you come with a, with a spirit of collaboration and negotiation and partnership, because we are partnering with the administration of the school, who is partnering with the, the staff of the school. It's, I think that the thing that you learn the most is that you have to be on top of the issues. You have to understand what's important to the people in your community. One of the things that we did early on, when, when I came on the school board was divide into regions. And I think that's really important because that gives us a deeper dive into the people in our direct area, what their needs and concerns are, and we can bring that back to the board to say, hey, this is what's concerning the people in my region and this is what we need to look at and discuss. So you have to understand the issues. We know that people are concerned about taxes, for example. We know people are concerned about equity and inclusion, making sure that their child is getting the best education possible for their learning capability. So all of those things are important. And as a board member, I come to learn, to listen, and then share my thoughts and views in a very intelligent way. I would say it that way.
I would say so too. So back to the basics of school boards. We have nine members. It's an unpaid job. In Westchester, we have 12,000 students, a budget of $270 million, over 1,000 teachers, a 70-square-mile district, and the lowest millage tax rate in Chester County. And so every other year, all over Pennsylvania, either four seats or five seats are up for reelection election. In Pennsylvania, Mississippi, and Massachusetts, the only three states in the country, these elections are political run-ups to what is essentially a non-political job. But that's the way it is. So if you're running for school board, you've got to link yourself, at least for the primaries, with, with the Democrats or the Republicans to get on the ballot and get yourself elected.
And understand that you're serving all children.
All children. That's the thing. That hat, all those hats will come off because you've got 12,000 children of all kinds of abilities and capabilities and you serve them all.
And that's a dominant.
The ones in your region. We don't make decisions based on get more for Sue's region or Joyce's region. We, we vote on what is good for the district.
Correct.
All right, Joyce, time commitment. You're a full-time woman all around. What's the time commitment for school board?
Uh, let's, 100 hours a day?
No, 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 that's your whole life.
The school, you know, once you, we have at least three meetings a month. When I say that, I, it's almost comical because more, most of the time, we have more than three. We have to prep for those meetings. We have, and since I've been on the board, I've been Chair of the Pupil Services Committee. So that's another obligation of not only prepping, but making sure the committee knows what's going on. So, oh my goodness, it's like I, if you have a passion for something, I hope you're not counting the minutes. But I would say at least 20 hours a week, a minimum of, to read through the material, ask questions of the material if you have it. If you have to send out notes or anything to your committee, that's at least 20 hours a week, I would say.
It is unlike for me, any other nonprofit board position I've ever occupied. It is much more involved than sitting once a month in a meeting and saying, yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Exactly. You don't come in, just sit there, drink coffee and go home.
Right. Because we are invited as board members to do interviews, help negotiate contracts with all kinds of staff, participate in staff meetings, staff trainings. We are invited to visit schools with the superintendent. We don't just drop by and take a look. We meet in executive session, which is more than board time. We work on book selection committees. Most of the board members work full-time. We do not, some do nots. We do not observe teachers. We do not hire teachers or fire teachers. We approve of school policies, review a lot of data about student achievement, work on and approve the district budget and ask a lot of questions at our meetings. We don't call principals up to investigate something we heard over at the ACME. In short, we don't manage the day-to-day operations of the district. We work as a team of nine board members and the superintendent, we call the team of 10. That's all over the state.
Right, right.
Okay, so we do and we don't.
Right, right. And, and I also, you know, I, I appreciate the effort that the, that the administration puts forth in, in engaging us into, you know, like when we build a new school and we're there to break ground and all those kinds of celebratory, thanking the, celebratory events, thanking the public and the business community when, for their support. All of those things are, are, are super important in maintaining good relationships in the community. And, you know, being part of the board, being an active member of the board.
Joyce, tell us how, tell the community, how does the school board go about doing its work? Do we meet at your house or my house or over at, over at Panera for meetings?
Well, especially now, no, because I'd have to clean my dining room table. The, the meetings are very well organized and.
And in the public.
And they have to be in the public, so we have transparency about how we are working with each other on behalf of the children. And it's really important that the constituents ultimately are the children. And so we have to make sure that we are being transparent. When we have our meetings though, however, it's not, when we have our public board, the school board meetings, those are not really negotiation meetings with the public. It's actually us meeting and the public being allowed to view our meetings. So that way they can see what decisions have been discussed, what decisions have been made, how we're working collectively, you know, decisions made on behalf of the students and, you know, programming, curriculum, books, all of those things. So we have that time to share. Now, we do work in committee. And when people come to those meeting, that's, that's more of a time to be able to ask questions.
Welcome input from the community at those meetings every time. Yes. And we get it.
Yes.
But we are not, we're not running forums. We're not running public forums. We are having a business meeting, which people are by law invited to watch.
Correct. I feel like that's probably the biggest misconception to the public is that the, the public school board meetings are where they come to express their grievances and it's not.
So, so there's time for public comment, but it's not a point of, like, we can't negotiate or have discussion about that, but we can hear. So.
And we do listen each month to people, two times, two different times during the board meeting. By law, is time for public input on the agenda, items not on the agenda.
Right.
So we hear a variety of things. The person who responds most often is Dr. Scanlon, the superintendent, who never leaves a board meeting without going directly to the people who have concerns and saying, here's my phone number, my door is open, let's talk about this. And that is the way most things are resolved, not with the public being told, just go away, it's none of your business, not at all.
Right.
But it's not up to board members and we, it, it takes some, it takes some getting used to when people come up to you on the street and say, Carrie, Carrie, I have a problem with my kid's teacher and I need you to fix it. Or my grandchildren, or Joyce's grandchildren say, Nana, please fire this teacher. They're just terrible. No, no, not our job. But can we make the superintendent aware that there are concerns out there? Yes, that is our job. And we do.
And I think on our board, I've seen, I've seen boards that were, did not know how to use their words, like adults, and have adult conversations. And, you know, at some points, maybe agree to disagree. The, the thing that is so important, I think, you don't want to be disrespectful to the people. They, when they bring public comment, it's just that they, they want to be heard. And, and I think we do that well, I have to say. We do listen, we do hear and respond appropriately. And I think that's just so important. Because these folks are part of our community. They're all part of the same.
Absolutely. We, we are elected to represent the community and provide the best education we can for their children. A person who wants to get on the board, someone listening right now, what do they need to do?
Well, I think that, first of all, it would be helpful if they came to board meetings, so, and committee meetings, so they can understand the time involved, what we actually do, how we do it, get to know the players on the school board, get to know the administration. All of those things are important. And like you said, Jim Scanlon always makes himself available after the meetings. If they have specific questions, they can, they can ask, but you need to be there. You need to be in it to win it. You know what I mean? You need to be present. Also, they need to know, read the, read the PA School Board Association information online, right?
Right.
Through the work. I think for, being on the school board is, is like crazy, crazy. But, but campaigning is, is, that's hard work. Because you have to convince others that you are the person that is adequate to represent their child or their children. So, so, so campaigning and, and getting that, I remember my very first campaign, like, I had no, like, I don't really have a political bent that way, so I had no idea what I was doing. But all I knew was that I wanted to uphold that school mission of educating, inspiring our children and be their personal best. That's all that floated around in my head. That is what I want for, that is what I insisted upon for my children and they turned out great. So I wanted to pass that baton on so that other children would, would have that same experience. And so that's what I rested on. I wanted to, I understood that mission. I understood what we needed to do as, as members of the board and that's what I, and so I went door to door. And I'll never forget this because at the time, my knees were so bad. I, I had to go in for knee surgery, but not before I campaigned. And so I went, stepped up people's steps with no railing, door to door, took little ones with me, my, 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 my family's children. I said, okay, we're going on hilly blocks, you know, with not being able to walk, but did it because I knew the importance of, of doing it. So you have to put the work in, in the campaign.
And to do that, I would suggest that anyone interested goes to the Democratic Committee people in the region where you live and vote.
Yes.
So. Because they know how to run a campaign.
They know how to run a.
They know how to get us elected.
Yes, they do.
And without them, all the passions in the world would have been wasted.
Yes.
So, yes. If, if people can remember that when you get to the meeting, you take off your political hat, you take off your superstar hat, you walk into that meeting and sit down to work as a team to make education the best it can be for everyone. Do you know what skills and knowledge are needed to be on the school board? You and I have pretty extensive backgrounds in education, but that's not required.
It's, it's not required, but you must be a problem solver. You, first of all, first, first and foremost, you need to be an excellent communicator. Because everybody is going to put their thoughts and ideas on the table at some point, at given points. And you need to be able to discern where, what you feel is best and how you can get that across. You have to be a collaborator. You have to be a strong negotiator. You have to understand that all of the, the, well, maybe not every single one, but you have to understand the, the laws that impact the school district, where they're limited, how they process change, because there's so much process involved in, in running a school district. You need to be able to under, you need to be able to take massive amounts of information and, and, and sort of boil those down to the key points that, that you need to make decisions on.
Joyce, how long, how long do you think it took you?
Oh my.
To feel at home, walking into a school board meeting and feeling as though, oh, I get this.
My second term?
Yeah.
My second term, really.
First year is not even enough to try and understand the mandates, the requirements, the laws, the, the local, federal, and state government things that impact a school district.
Correct.
And a $270 million budget.
Year one, I'm going to do this, 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 this and this.
Right.
Believe, well, it's a process.
Right. It's a process.
It's a process. So get used to that. But, but even, so, but you can work change through the process. But you have to have the patience, the tenacity. You have to have the vision.
Reading.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So we welcome anybody who wants to work to be on the school board, doctors, dentists, engineers, people of any background.
Former graduates.
And have a high school, a high school diploma. That's what's.
Right.
Bottom line. All right. We're going to move on, Joyce. This is a big one. Suggestions. What would you say right now, this is something that people face all over this country. What are the biggest challenges facing our school district at this time? Give me three.
Well, looking, considering that we're a microcosm of our, of our country and our state, everybody's concerned about COVID. We're concerned about COVID and how we get our students back into school full-time, just like pre-COVID. That is a major, of course, we don't want our children to be sick. We don't want the children to infect teachers. We don't want them to take home things to their parents or their grandparents. We want to have, we want, we want, I, I think that even with the, of the hybrid version of school, you know, we're, we, we are doing everything that we can to keep the schools clean. This is a very stressful process and it has been since March, when schools were closed. It's difficult because as you said, with all of the students that we have, with over 12,000 students, it is to keep everybody safe and healthy. And when you consider the families of those students, that you have a, an exponential number of people that you're trying to take care of. It's, it's a, that, to me, that can sometimes keep me up at night.
And we, we know if we can get the vaccines, we can get back to work.
And the second issue, Sue, and I've been working on this since my very first day as a school board member, is equity and inclusion. Making sure every single student has the access to the tools they need to succeed. You know, closing the achievement gap. There should be no gap if we're teaching, if we're treating everybody the same equal, if we're treating the students equitably, giving them what they need to succeed, there should be no achievement gaps. So I continue to work on, on equity and inclusion.
Tell, tell us then what the board has done in this area, starting last spring, last summer.
We.
What can we insist on?
We insisted on having an equity and inclusion audit. From that audit, we have been doing the thing that I've been saying for seven years, just let little voice. Maybe we need someone that full-time keeps their eye on equity and inclusion and can measure it to see how we're doing. So we have recently hired a Director of Equity and Inclusion, reporting to the superintendent. I'm.
Wonderful.
I'm thrilled by that. I can't.
Working with the Human Resources Director.
Yeah.
Working with the person who hires staff, working with the person who writes curriculum. They're at the superintendent's cabinet level.
Yes, yes.
Critically important job. And we started working on this last summer, the summer before.
But collectively as a board, we did it. We did it. I think I'm, I'm just really proud of us, how we've come together to, to make that kind of movement in the, in the board, in the school district. So yeah, that's, that's exciting.
It is exciting. It is exciting. We are making progress. What would you like to see us do in the next five years?
Oh gosh, what would I like to see? Well, I talked about the achievement gap. I want that gap closed. I want to hear that every, no, if I were to walk down the halls of the school and talk to any student, I want them to tell me, yes, I'm getting exactly what I need in this district to succeed. That's what I, 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 I work on that. I think about that every single, you know, with my job, working with adult students, with adult literacy, I see the students that fall through the cracks. I see how they turn out as adults. So that intervention early is what we need to present so that they can succeed, feel safe in the schools, feel well-regarded in the schools, feel respected.
Accepted.
Exactly, exactly. Every day, every day, I, I think about that. I, you know, the, the, the information that I give to my fellow board members is it, with that as the foundation. I want our student to succeed. Yes, yes. If they feel different, that's okay. I was different when I was in high school. I, I had it, I was, I had a learning disability, which I didn't even understand till I grew up. But that's part of who I am today and that's part of who makes me the person that I am today. And I embrace every point of difference that I have. Because it gives me, it makes me creative. It makes me, I, it just, it just brings so much to who I am. And that's what I want the students to understand.
Well, without that, we're a lot of numbers and an empty hollow shell, without valuing each child.
Every single one.
Child is, we are nothing but anything.
Yes.
I, I.
And I'm just going to end by sharing this. When I used to go to my, my younger son, when I used to go to his parent meetings with the teacher, I, I would, I would gauge the teacher by this. I would come in and I'd say, oh, I'm Jesse's mom. And they would say, oh, you're Jesse's mom? Or it would be, you're Jesse's mom? And give me that affirmation of like, that kid is great. He had learning difference, but he turned that around to become successful in his work. So he uses that, when you have a learning difference, it doesn't, that's not a bad thing. So he uses that, when you have a learning difference, it does, that's not a bad thing. It's just a thing.
It's a difference.
Sort of who you are. So I'd just like to see, that's what I'd like to see, closing that achievement gap. Um, you know, making sure kids feel respected, making sure that they, that's the place they want to be, the, in the schools. So, yeah.
Joyce, you've done a magnificent job this morning.
Oh, thank you.
I thank you for co-hosting and for representing the school board so well and being so informative. I thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you so, so much. Um, one last thing, Joyce, if people want to know more about you or more about running for school board, where can they find that information?
They can find that information on the, our website. Our contact information is.
The whole School Board 101 workshop is recorded and on our website.
Excellent.
A ton of information on that website.
Yes, and we, we always need good people on the school board. Always, always, always.
All right, excellent. Well, Joyce, thank you so much for taking the time to join us today. And good luck on uh, what, what term number will this be when you get reelected?
Three.
Third term? All right. Excellent. Joyce, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Nice to spend my morning with you. Have a great day.
You too.
Okay, bye.
And Sue, you know, I'm actually running for a school board myself this year. Um, I am running in West Chester's Region 3. Um, any advice or base piece of advice?
Carrie, why are you running for school board?
I'm running for school board because I believe in our schools and I believe in the value of public education. I am a proud product of Pennsylvania's public education system from kindergarten through graduate school. And I believe that our students, teachers and support staff know what they want and know what is best for our schools. I'm running for school board because I believe that we have an obligation to listen, learn and build equitable systems where students can thrive.
I can't think of a better elevator speech than I just heard from you. Why are you running? For all the right reasons. Are you connected to public education? Yes, from your very heart and soul you are. You would be a welcome addition to the West Chester School Board. Go talk to your Democratic Committee people. I'll bet you already have. And I wish you all the best in this campaign. You call me if you want to ever meet for coffee and we'll talk.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Sue.
You are welcome. Thanks, Carrie.
I want to thank Sue Tierney and Joyce Chester for joining me today on our first episode this season of Democratic Voices. Shows like this wouldn't be possible without you. So please donate to the Chester County Democrats so that we can continue this show and get more Democrats elected to office. Democratic Voices is hosted by Carrie Stare and our co-host today was Sue Tierney. It is a production of the Chester County Democratic Committee and created by Nadia Graves and Kyle Hudson. Music is by Mike Knappy. This episode was edited by Kyle Hudson. Always remember, thanks for the things you care about. But do it in a way that will lead others to join you because history has its eyes on us. See you next week for another episode of Democratic Voices.